I'd like to welcome everybody to the March 14th regular meeting of the Deep River Board of Selectmen at, we'll call the meeting to order at 6:31. And the first item on the agenda is to approve the minutes from the regular meeting held on February 28th and the special meeting held on February 27th.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes on February 28th and a special meeting on February 27th.
I second that motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Next item on the agenda is the audience of citizens. If there's any business to come before the board. You have some audience here? Anything to speak about?
I'm just curious as to how the food waste program is doing.
It's going pretty well. We've only had a month of numbers that we've been able to discern. We, I don't think, I know it's not all food waste, food scraps, but the tonnage of waste that got pulled out and taken away for the month of February was 26 tons below our average for the past year. So I think the increased activities, the new, new workers up there are paying attention to who's coming in and who's dumping stuff.
They're doing a great job.
And I think, I think as well, the people are paying a little more attention to what they're throwing into their garbage. It seems as if we pulled probably about five tons of food scraps in that month. So, Blue Earth, the folks that we're working with said it was the fastest and the most, yeah, the best way to say it is the most rapid increase of, of, beginning of a program that they've worked with yet in Connecticut.
I think people, there's someone who tweeted out, I think people are just trying to make it very fast.
Very wealthy. Or the new shop up in Chester that was going through. But whatever it is, it's going very well. And, and we're only at, I would suggest we're only at about 60% participation. So if everyone, if everyone would participate, I think we would see a more significant change.
And where exactly is this power conversion burned?
It's up in Southington.
Southern.
Yeah.
Is that only two there?
Yep. And, you know, we're, we're working hard, the region is working hard to come up, the state is mandating communities to try to get into, to open up regional waste of, waste, shoot, lost the ten.
Fortune.
Mira. No. Let me explain.
That's southern.
Mira, just Mira, the regional authorities, regional waste authorities, RWAs. And while we all down around here are already part of one, it's called Mira. Now, Mira, their plant is closed and they're, they're going, they've only got about three or four more years left in existence, but we're asking the state to allow us to reconfigure Mira. And why go through the process of starting something that already exists?
It's one in Hartford.
It's in Hartford now, but it may or may not stay there. It might move down, down here or somewhere, but, you know, move the offices, basically. But we're working hard, the area is working hard to figure out how we're going to make this a regional effort and less expensive and try to, you know, it's a long conversation. And I think I'm a little bit in disagreement with DEP who do not think that the trash-to-energy is, is the right way to go. I don't think there's a better way to go. So, at least right now.
Do they charge us or?
Oh, yeah.
They do. For pickup?
No. We haul our own.
No, I think he's talking about the new program.
Blue Earth? Yeah, they, they charge us, yeah. We're not, I've said all along, this food scrap thing as it exists now is not as much to save money as it is to, to do the right thing with our waste. We're saving on, on, you know, moving our, our garbage from here to, to Ohio.
So the carbon footprint is less?
Yeah. Exactly.
But if you take the 26 ton for one month, you only pay $115, $118, $116 ton.
Going to $118.
It's about $3,000 a month, so if we could do that for a year, that's $36,000.
No, we're talking real money if we can keep the reduction low. But we'll have to take out of that the transport up to, up to Blue Earth.
People are getting some benefit.
They're getting a lot of benefit.
Yeah. For the conversion to electricity, so that goes back out of that one.
I'm not sure where they're selling their electricity to. Could be Massachusetts, could be.
But someone's getting electricity.
I'm sure someone's getting electricity, yeah.
Instead of sticking it in the ground.
Yep. Absolutely. It's a good thing, and I, I'm very, very pleased with, with the numbers that we're getting and the participation. It would be, you know, hopefully that participation will grow. It is, it is a positive thing for the community.
And by the way, those guys are doing a nice job up at the land.
I think they're doing a good job, yeah.
It's clean.
Yeah, told them to, yeah.
Anybody else? Doug?
I'd like to ask the Board of Selectmen to convene, I'll call it a workshop or a public forum on the ARPA funding and the process. We think it would be a little more lay towards allowing the townspeople to have a voice in the process. And I think, you know, this is a once-in-a-generation type opportunity, you know, for our town. And fortunately, we still have, you know, funds left to spend and, and left to allocate. And I think, you know, it would be a good opportunity to give a, a public forum for people to discuss, you know, the ARPA funding, the priorities, you know, what do we think our town needs? What do we do well? What do we have challenges with? What are the priorities and the opportunities for us as a town? And I think, you know, while I'll speak for myself, I thought last night it would be that opportunity to have that discussion. And I think unfortunately, you know, that discussion was cut short. And so I would like to have, you know, another avenue, another venue where that discussion could take place. Maybe it's brainstorming, maybe it's a little bit back and forth about, you know, like I said, what priorities are, what our challenges and that are, what our opportunities are. And, you know, thinking about this a little bit, I did a little bit of research and I think it's a kind of a conference on municipalities has a ARPA brochure, toolbook, something like that. And I think right in there, they talk about, you know, establishing dialogue. That's very important for this process, to engage, you know, the stakeholders in the community, the public, emergency services, civic leaders, faith leaders, nonprofits, those types of things. And, you know, reading that, I, I agree. I think that's very important. And I think it's important to have, you know, an open dialogue, someplace where we can sit around a table, maybe go back and forth, maybe do a little bit of brainstorming. So again, I would just ask that the Board of Selectmen convene some type of workshop forum, something that, you know, the townspeople could participate in and have that type of discussion.
Well, that's an interesting thought. Certainly we will, the ARPA's on our agenda later on to discuss, so that we can talk about that. I, I don't know, I personally, I think that last night's meeting, you know, I know some folks left there disappointed, some folks probably left there angry. I think some folks may have come angry. But I, I think that the, the place to talk about the policy is, or the procedure is here, where we are, where we are deciding how we do some, how we do these things. Last night's meeting was an opportunity to ask questions about the proposals that were in front of us, not the process of how we got there. And that's the only conversation that I saw get cut short was the one where it went from a question about the process to an argument about the process. And that's not, that's not the place for that. That the place for that is here, at the, at the Board of Selectmen's meeting or at the Board of Finance meeting. That meeting last night was a good opportunity for people to ask about the requests. And everyone that was, that had a request had people there to answer those questions. And I answered those questions, and I think we did that well, until it became an argument about how the process of how that, that particular procedure or that particular power request got there. So I think it's, you're, you're, I agree with you that there should be some dialogue. I'm not sure exactly how to do that, but we will, certainly we'll talk about it and we'll, we'll consider something like that. You know, I talked about last night, I thought about it prior to last night and after last night, that maybe similar to our budget process, we have a, a, a public hearing, if you will. So it's just an opportunity to discuss the proposals that are coming forward. I, I've done a lot of work on this over the past year and a half, and I've talked to first selectmen from around the state, mayors from around the state. And every town is doing this differently. Some towns spent their money in the first six months of having it before there was even any final rulings out on it. Other towns have gone slowly forward. Some towns had large committees, some towns, the first selectman made all the decisions. I think what we've tried to do here, as, and we've discussed it as we've gone along, is that we've tried to funnel the requests here, go through these requests, bring all of the requests forward, discuss them in public, and then bring those, as we get to decisions, we bring those to the Board of Finance, and then have that same conversation all over again. Sometimes with, if necessary, the people, the applicants themselves here to defend or to, not so much defend is not the right word, but to present their application. So we have tried to engage all of the people that you mentioned. You know, we've had all the emergency services here, and all of the emergency services have got requests. We've had, the nonprofits are here. We've done a lot. We can do, and I will never, ever say that we've done it, that we have done everything, because we haven't. And we are trying to do all of that. So we've heard your suggestion and we'll, we'll listen to it and we'll talk about it.
I just want to chime in a second. And I hear what you said, Doug, about, you know, generation, you know, once-in-a-lifetimes. Hopefully we never get this again. We're in this problem. And I said, and I believe Catherine referenced me in one of her emails, that I found this very stressful. Because again, and I even, Alan, we have a pie this big, and we have a lot of people we have to feed. But what's bothering me the most is that we're dividing a beautiful community with this money. Where we all should be happy right now that we've got this, I don't want to call it a gift, but a very nice chunk of money to spend on our community, and it seems that we're getting divided amongst the community. And I find that very stressful. That's me as Duane Gates. No one else, it's, it's myself. Because again, we all should respect each other, respect what people want, what's good for you may not be good for me, what's good for, we're all just part of this deep river. It's a beautiful community. I've lived here my whole life, and I believe in it. But this money issue here is driving a nail between, and we're fracturing our community, a tight-knit community that we have here. And whatever way we could possibly regroup the troops and bring them together, I'm all for it. But I just wanted to say that's, that's me, my two cents.
I would, I would echo a lot of, most of what Duane said. I went home after last night's meeting and I lost sleep because of the confrontation, the negativity that came from the meeting. I, I lost sleep last night, and that's after the fact when the decisions were made. You know, I should have been relieved that they were done and we can move on to other things, but I lost sleep about it. All, the, the, the list of the people that have come have, I think all of who you say should be involved have asked for money. And they presented, and they will present. I would be, I, I think I would be in favor of, like when the school board, Region Four comes, and there's a public presentation by them, and then the public can, can ask questions and get their, their questions answered and all that. Maybe something like that, once, once the Board of Selectmen and the Board of Finance move the thing and then have a public non-vote, but a public hearing where people can come in and, and then they can, when it comes time for the vote, they can say yea or nay. I think like Angus said, there were people that left upset, but looking at the turnout and, and the way the vote went, I think there might be some people maybe that didn't vote because of whatever, but I think the majority of people that were there liked what they saw and liked what they wanted to spend it on. And that's my opinion. And, and that's how a democracy works. You know, if more people want something, then, you know, it's, I think democracy worked last night. Are we perfect? No. Can we be better? Yes, like Angus said. And maybe having a, a public meeting, a public discussion of prior to a town meeting, so that like we do with the school boards and the town budget or whatever, you know, some people get more information. But I, it was very, very distressing to me last night. And it makes me, it makes me as an electric public official question my desire to do it anymore. I'll be totally honest with you.
Let's let Doug finish his question.
I'm going to follow up, and I would have, appreciate all your comments tonight, and I thank you for them. I think it's your comment about discussing this at this venue, at the Board of Selectmen meeting, Board of Finance meeting, as the public discussion. And from my standpoint as a, as a citizen of the town, you know, this is not a public discussion. This is not a public meeting, it's a meeting in public. I can come and observe, but it's not something where we're engaging other people in the community, hey, what are your priorities? Where can we find comment ground? Where do we think that we want to move this process? So when you discuss it here, you discuss it amongst yourselves, and then you take it with the Board of Finance, and you discuss it amongst the Board of Finance. But that's not, to me, really a, a discussion where you're engaging, you know, the rest of the public. So that's my only comment or concern, the form that I envision is something where, you know, there's many people and they all get to speak, and they get their few minutes, and, you know, maybe we have this brainstorming session and there's synergy that comes from that. Maybe we find comment ground, maybe we find some projects that, you know, can build off of each other, as opposed to us just standing here commenting after the fact. Like tonight, you're going to discuss it. So I don't know what you're going to discuss, but my, my time to comment is now. So I have to make my comment. But then a half hour from now, you may have discussions and, you know, my opportunity is...
I appreciate that. That's a good comment. I appreciate what you're saying about that. But I think, and with that in mind, what I'm going to say now, with, with what you just said in mind, the, it is an opportunity for you to, to express what you think about what we've been talking about. And we can continue the conversation with, with that, with that comment. I think there are a couple of, a couple of things to talk about with that. We've been talking, this has been available, and we've been talking about it, and we've advertised it as much as, as much as I know how. Maybe, like I said earlier, obviously we could do better with everything that I try. But the, we have lots of requests, lots of thoughts. People have had an opportunity for a year and a half to bring things forward of what they want to do. Not at a great big public meeting where we're all going to talk about it. People have taken it, taken their time, their, the public agencies, private agencies, all of the folks that CCM or the federal governments recommend, may have recommended involvement, have had the opportunity to come forward. And some have, not all, some. There are, there are things in here that we're proposing that the town do for the businesses. You know, reimbursements for facade improvements, things like that. Grants for money that they can prove have been lost. We're working on those projects. Other projects, like we talked about last night, like we'll talk about tonight, like we'll continue to talk about, folks have had an opportunity to talk and to bring it forward. They've had an opportunity to talk with their neighbors, to talk with their other business people, to talk with folks about and bring it forward. A town meeting to talk about how we're doing it is, if you, if you have a problem with how we're doing it, you should bring it to my office so we can discuss it and we can talk, talk about whether we are making technical mistakes about how this moves forward. I don't believe that we are making any technical mistakes, that we are working this exactly the way that we are told to do it. That we, that the guidelines within which we are staying in the parameter of the guidelines which we have been given. If we're, if, if you're wanting to brainstorm with the town about how we spend the money, we have a pretty big spreadsheet of people that have taken the time and effort to come to us with proposals, with requests. And it's our, it's our job as the elected officials, as the Board of Selectmen, to discern that and to make a decision as to what we think, given all that we've got here, given the guidelines, what we think is the appropriate way to move it forward. If, if there is, if you have a problem with what the proposal is, then the town meeting and the vote is the time to talk about that. If you have, if you have other things that you would like to do, then we are still receiving requests. Bring them in. I don't know that a town meeting with 50 people hanging around, or 70 people, or 150, or fill the auditorium 280, is a brainstorming idea of how we can spend the money. If you have thoughts, bring them forward. We're, we're still, we're open to as many suggestions as we can take. And we will, we will distribute this money until we have no more. And as fairly and as equitable be, and, and it will all go to a vote. It's not us that's making the decision of what goes forward, it's the people at the meeting.
I guess I would follow up what you said, Doug. Maybe when we discuss, I'm just throwing out, maybe when we discuss this ARPA like tonight, we give the audience of citizens another opportunity to have some dialogue with us.
Sure.
Granted, it's not 50 people like last night, but at least the people that are here, you can voice your comments, current concerns or whatever. At least we're giving you a second, because I think you said, Doug, let you talk now and then you can't talk the rest of the night. At least we give the people that came out here tonight an opportunity to talk a little bit more.
Fine. Move the audience of citizens until after.
Or just, you know...
No, we've already made decisions.
No, I know.
So, you know, in the ARPA conversation, if we, we can try that out and see how it works out. You know, there are, there are lots of requests and there are folks, there, there's an opportunity for folks to look at them, to review them and say, that's a really bad idea. And, and maybe you do believe it wholeheartedly that's a bad idea. But it's up to us to agree or disagree. And it's not up to us to decide, well, that's getting thrown out. It's up to us to move it forward to the Board of Selectmen, to the Board of Finance, and then up to the Board of Finance to say, it's, it's up to them to move it forward. And that's, and it's up to the town then to say, that's a really bad idea, we love, or we love that. Now, last night I thought should have been a pretty simple meeting. Those were all, I believe, really important issues, agencies that needed to move forward with, with the requests. And, and it was an interesting and eye-opening meeting. But anyway, let's move forward. I appreciate what you're saying, and I think that we can find an equitable way to, to have some conversation about whatever we're talking about regarding the requests during the meetings. But I, I don't, if we're going to talk about procedure or process, then that, then that is something that we should be putting, ask that we put it on the agenda, we'll put it on the agenda and talk about it. It's on the agenda tonight to talk about this, this whole thing, and we can continue, and we can do that, and we'll talk about it. And if anybody here has an issue with procedure, then bring it up so we can talk about it, we can get some feedback and get some legal advice if you really think strongly and, and have a good argument that what we are doing is just wrong and it's going to get us in trouble. The last thing that we want is, is anything to be wrong. This, this is something that is good, this is a positive thing for our community. And we have tried very hard to make sure that, that this continues to work for our community. We're not looking at anything that is, you know, we're trying to work for the town. And I don't know, I think we'll try to, try to include you guys tonight, and we'll try to include folks as we go along with this conversation more than we have. That's all we can do is try to do better. Jim? Are you done?
I'll go second, just thank you.
Go ahead. Alan had his hand up.
Jim, I didn't think it was, I didn't think there was a lot of anger at the meeting last night. I mean, I think people came with the hope of asking some questions that they weren't able to, whether they were not able to attend these meetings, or get in touch with you, or get an answer. I think I sense some disappointment in those that felt like they weren't totally included in getting some answers, like myself. And I think what ended up happening last night, some, if some came with anger, they were only possibly angry because they felt that the people questioning, were questioning how the money was spent, or where the money was spent, and not the process of how it was spent. And I think people were disappointed.
It depends on who you talk to, because numerous people came up to me at the end of the meeting and, and expressed displeasure as to how it went. So you, you saw what you saw, I saw what I saw. And some, and somehow we have to meet in the middle.
Right. If there were any questions that you had that were not answered, ask them.
No, it was just, it felt uncomfortable. Like Allison, you know, she was absolutely magnificent in how she answered the questions, she was prepared. And, and that's how I had viewed it was going to go. So...
I don't know, I don't know how it didn't go any differently. I didn't, the only, I only saw, the only contention that I saw was that they just talked as a side. I didn't see any other...
You know, sitting and just watching body language of some people, they were disappointed that you were questioning. And, and that's, that's not what we're discussing openly and like citizens here, you know. And that happens in a situation like that.
We had a different observation of the meeting. Alan, you had something?
Yeah. I kind of line up on Mike's point, and I think what was mistaken for anger was probably frustration. I think that we had a lot of citizens that wanted a part of the conversation. I don't think people came opposed to any of the proposals, but want to understand where and how the priorities were set for the town. Because it's, it still isn't exactly clear how decisions are made about proposals. What you've, what you've proposed tonight is that if a citizen has an idea regarding a need that could be met with the ARPA funds, that it is, it's their burden to bring forward a proposal. And I don't think most of the citizens...
No, that's...
Let me finish my thought. Don't, don't correct me. Let me, let me have my thought.
Angus, yep, thank you. I'm sorry. Go ahead.
I know Duane listened and responded and didn't correct. He said, let's try that. I think that's what a lot of people want, is to be able to be heard and to be part of the discussion. Because I think a lot of the public has put a position of voting for an application either yea or nay. Nobody wants to be in that position. I think people want to be in a consensus process. They want to be in a process to be able to agree, say, yes, we understand that need and understand how the, the metrics are being applied toward the town's goals. And I think everybody would be, would be in agreement on that. And I think part of the frustration was, a lot of people didn't understand exactly what was being proposed or where, what was, how much was being allocated in towards what they want to be knowledgeable about every aspect of, of these proposals and what the decision process is. And I think you would have consensus among everybody and not a scenario of just being in a position of making a decision based on limited information. And I think it's really important to understand the perception of people that this is kind of a top-down process. We are not able to enter into discussion with the selectmen. And it was the town meeting that was the opportunity for people to, to voice their interests, their needs, their agreements, and their questions. But the agenda was set to only respond to individual proposals. And nobody wants to speak against somebody. They're all, they're all valid. So I think Doug's point of a need for some sort of an open forum, so you can come So I think Doug's point of a need for some sort of an open forum, so you come forward with an idea, and it can be clarified how those needs or desires are met, or prioritized, or appropriate for this funding, or handled some other way. I think what you saw last night was frustration, not anger, but frustration. And I think somehow, as the leadership of the town, you need to address that. Because otherwise, we'll move towards further polarization as opposed to collaboration. And the one thing I think would be very important at these town meetings is to be able to have various stakeholders. Each one of these proposals that come forward, there are other stakeholders that should be weighing in on this, whether it is planning, whether it's economic development, whether it's education. Because all of these things that are being put forward, these stakeholders, these stakeholder groups, these representatives of the town have a contribution towards. And I think it's important to include that broader discussion, just like how planning zoning is moving forward with the POCD. It involves all of the stakeholders, all of the opinions, and it's about a consensus process. And I think the townspeople are wanting to weigh in on that in the same sort of way, that they can come to a meeting, ask the questions, offer some suggestions, and then move on. To a vote, if necessary. But to be limited to vote on a proposal that comes forward, limited discussion to that proposal, is not the big idea that I think a lot of people were hoping to discuss last night.
You guys may be saturated with this, and I'm sure you are. You've been doing it for two years?
Yeah.
You're saturated with it, I get it. But, and you've heard everyone's explanation, and everyone's verification, and everyone's needs, and I'm sure it's beyond. But when last night, five or four items came before us, we haven't had the exposure to all of the information, data, requests, and complaints. You know, so you have to understand it's natural for us to, you know, be kind of brought up to speed, and if we have questions, and again, I get it, you've been hammered with this, and you probably can't wait till it's spent. But we've been, we sit on the sidelines and just watch it. And if you have a question, you don't want to be made to feel like you're stepping on toes.
Mike, I think you and I spoke twice, we spoke Friday, we spoke yesterday. Okay, maybe I didn't eloquently spell it out as good as Joey did last night, but I told you basically how the Housing Authority was going to work. I told you about the Dry Town New Services, I told you, again. We have a packet here with everyone that wants money, and it's spelled out. I don't remember every single one of them. Maybe I should, but I don't. But I tried to explain to you as best I could. Again, Joey did a phenomenal job. So your thing, Al, the people that were there that spoke on their money that they were asking for, I thought they did a very good job. I don't know much more we can provide you like tonight. We have another one coming to us tonight, first time we're seeing it, we'll read it, it's spelled out, but I don't know. So again, I just, we're all trying to work together here.
Oh, yeah. And this is a new process for everybody, and I understand you don't have a lot of time to spend on this, you have other things, but, you know, they were good.
Do you have a list of all the proposals that are before you right now? So you guys then go through it, and you push it down to make decisions about? I think that's what we're all talking about, is being involved in that portion of it. If we had that while you were discussing it, if that was made available to the citizens or to people who show up to the meetings, to be part of that. Because it might be, along with these gentlemen, maybe they have ideas, like you said, if you pass them, present them to you, it may be that they coincide, or that they're very similar projects that they're looking at, so.
I saw an answer from Stacy.
I just thought that maybe we could have access to the list that when you discuss it, we understand what you're saying.
When all this came in, we didn't prioritize and say, "This is first, this is second, this is, we definitely need this." We took things that we thought were important right now. The Dry Town New Services, Chester had already passed it, Essex had already passed it. It's not going to move forward without us. We thought that was a time-sensitive item, that we should move forward. The Mules on Wheels Truck, all the other communities have come up with their money, they're waiting for deeper, time-sensitive, we moved that forward. So we tried to, not prioritize, but time-sensitive. So we moved those forward. I want to say they were the easier ones. And so now we have a list here, a page and a half more.
So for what is left, because we weren't on top of that before last night's meeting, would the public be able to have a list and be able to converse with you about what is before you and how your decisions are being made? Would that be possible?
The list is public, it's out in front of the town clerk's office. It's all there for anybody that wants to have it. Yes, all of this is yes, the answer to yes. Alan, we should be doing, we should be listening more. Doug, yes, we should be including the public.
I did not know that the list was.
All of this is good information. But, you know, Alan, to your point, I didn't, I don't think that I said, and if I did say, I misspoke, that you should put, if you have a thought, you should put a proposal together. I'm not putting that onus on you. If you have a thought of something that the money should be spent with, my office is open all the time. I don't not want anybody to come in and talk to me. If you have a thought, then express it to me. I'm happy to talk about this stuff, I've been talking about it. I do know everything that's in here. I know a lot about what, every single request that's come in here. I've been working on this for a year and a half. I have, I've been very careful, and I've expressed to this board from the beginning, and to the public from the beginning, we are going to wait until the final ruling comes out. Because I was watching towns like these having misspent their money. I didn't want any of this. But that didn't mean we weren't working on it, we were accepting projects, we were working with people who were making applications and wanted to make applications. Historical Society came to us.
They were one of the first.
They were one of the very first ones to come in. They knew what was going on, and we talked and we worked with them. I don't believe that you can have 4,000 people decide how to spend a million and three. We need to have ideas, and it needs to go from the top down. If there's more conversation that you guys want to have, we should have it, that's true, and we'll try to do that. But I've watched towns that had committees, large committees, small committees, and those towns floundered with how these things moved forward. It just became a bigger argument, to Dwayne's point, it just divided people. You could go on to Chester, Chester's first meeting was a disaster. People were yelling and screaming at people, and they had to actually cancel the meeting. That was the end of it. So we tried our best to move this forward in a way that I thought was going, that we thought was going to move it forward in a way that was, that was a positive way, that the process was good, and that the ideas are the ideas. And we discussed the ideas as they move forward through the process. That's how we got here. We're hearing from a few people that they didn't like that. We heard from a lot of people that they did like that. So we're going to have to weigh that out. And I'm going to listen, and we're going to ask, let Stacy talk. And then I actually have to move, we've got an agenda, and we have a meeting with a budget hearing, so we're going to have to move this.
So to Mike's point before, I think the misunderstanding may have been that the questions weren't to your process, but how the people asking for it came up with their amounts. So it wasn't against you gentlemen, it was where we thought that the opportunity was to ask how they came up with their number. And so it was not to be confrontational or anything, but it was to ask those questions. We absolutely appreciate what you have done with this, and appreciate how difficult it is to make these decisions. So I think that's where it kind of went around, was at that point. When you are defending how you're doing it, we weren't challenging that. We were just asking for more information about where they came up with their numbers for their funds. So I just wanted to clarify that.
I think that arguments were not, that communication started with the ambulance, that we're going to give up to 50% for the ambulance, and then it was, well, are we giving 50% to Historical Society? And how come we aren't giving them 50%? I think that's where that came from last night, right?
That was one of the questions.
That was one of the questions, so. Again, they presented us what they needed, what they wanted, in this folder here, and they spelled everything out. And if they said they needed X, we tried to give them X. But this list is too big for the amount of money we have. But Mike said he had a half a million dollars that he was going to give us last night, that's what I heard, so. Send it over. I'm just trying to make some little note for you. No, it's.
I'm sorry.
Dwayne, you raised a point, is there an answer as to how you make a decision as to 50% for one, 100% for another, and none for another proposal? What's the metaphor?
That was not a decision that we made, that was the requesters. That wasn't, we didn't decide to give half to the ambulance, they said.
I believe that it was Angus's recommendation, was to fund it to half. If I go back through all of this.
If we talk about it, it's my recommendation after conversations with the ambulance association.
They said that they could afford half of it, and that's what Angus came back, doesn't say, "I recommend half."
And that's part of this history, and that file is their communication and presentation and communication with us, that they had the financial wherewithal to foot the rest of the bill. The Historical Society is a nonprofit that relies on donations and grants and carriage house rental. They're not walking and playing in money over there. And, you know, it's a different situation, but I think.
It'd be the answer, though, it's, it can be understood, that's a conversation, and if you go back and you request what the applicant can pony up, as opposed to say, "This is what it's going to cost," and you give the whole thing. There is a conversation, it's a fiduciary responsibility, is to try to facilitate all of these, but not to necessarily underwrite the entire request.
Precisely. And that's been the case since the very first request came in.
And you'll see, you'll see on the list as we go forward, Alan. There's some here that we would love to give them 100%, but we don't have enough to give them, so. 50%, 60%, 40% is better than no percent. So it's not that we're saying you aren't important, this is how we're trying to dice it out.
And just thank you for letting us know that, the overall, because I know a lot of people have asked me, and I have no idea where the answer is. List of things that are being considered, that's part of what I also understand.
You will have to check, though, because the overall list does keep changing.
Yep. Well, I'm aware of several proposals that are coming in as a result of.
Is it something that could be posted to the website so folks could just make a link, as opposed to having to physically come down?
Maybe, we'll see about that. It's a living-changing thing, I'm not sure, I'm going to have to try to maintain something like that. But we'll make an effort so that you can go online instead of coming in here.
In my full-time job, I represent a community. I'm not going to say what in my real job. And I had lunch last week with the first selectman. He's spending all that money how he feels fit. I told him how we're doing, he said, "You guys are nuts." But he's spending it, that's how their town ordinance is, and he's spending it. And they have about $1.5 million. And I just sat there shaking my head. So like Angus said, there's some communities that one guy's spending it, and there's other communities that have a committee, and so we're just trying to keep everybody as best possible. It's hard.
And that's true, if you take the money out of all this picture, when this is all said and done, this is going to be, looking back, a wonderful exercise in community and getting together, or not. You know, really, absolutely.
Not fragile.
Thank you all very, very much for your input. The next item on the agenda is appointments, and we have Parks and Recreation Commission, Kristen Marie Brennan, term to expire 12/1/2025.
I make a motion to approve to Park and Recreation Commission, Kristen Marie Brennan, term to expire 12/1/2025.
I'll second it.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
I'm going to ask that we table the ARPA application, we'll schedule a special meeting moving to this other one.
I make a motion to adjourn, 7:15.
Need a second.
Second.
Sorry.
Wait, let's get a motion to table that item.
Oh, okay. Make a motion that we table item five, discussion of possible action regarding the ARPA fund application.
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Now we can adjourn.
Make the motion again, adjourn.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you all very much.